I've got one from the other.
Andy, make sure you phone us.
Oh, we don't have room out in or vault?
Yeah, 'cause I'm here to collect the dollars.
I ain't figured that one out yet. I got parade moves on.
My head's actually hurt.
Bring her back.
Yeah, could you do it? Could you do it?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome you to the Pierce County Board of Commissioners Work Session, November twenty-second, twenty-eleven, at six o'clock. And if you'd be able to pray for late.
Sure will. Everybody's can, please.
Dear gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day. You blessed us with it all here, Lord. Lord, thank you for the people here tonight. Thank you for the commissioners here, Lord, and just be with each and every one of us as we listen and all the information that's put before us, Lord, and just be with us as we take that information and run it through our minds and make the best decisions based on the county of Pierce, Lord. Lord, just thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, who died on cross for our sins. And, Lord, we just all be thankful this week and remember what Thanksgiving's really about. That's just all in your holy Son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Today, the first time on our work session tonight is discussion on bids, bids on transit. Mr. Danny, Saturday, to answer questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A pleasure to see y'all again. And I trust each of y'all have received our copy of our proposal that y'all sent out to RFP on, you know, for providing a third-party operator for the transit system. If that's the direction that the board in Pierce County wants to go, so we're here to provide that service if it lead the way of the board. I'm here ourselves to answer any questions I've met with several of y'all on several occasions to try to answer and explain our role in transit in Georgia as a whole. We operate in twenty, twenty-four counties, I think it is right now, across South Georgia, and been in transportation for twenty-five years. So, I'm not saying we know everything, but we do know a great deal about, you know, coordinated transportation and rule of Georgia. So, I'm here to try to answer any questions that any of y'all may have pertaining to this proposal.
First of all, commissioners, I'd like to thank Danny for coming down and being with us. We have met with him several times, and they have eighteen out of nineteen of the counties in our district. And we really appreciate y'all stepping up to the plate. I've had, I've had probably maybe four calls since we, since the bid opening. And I assure the folks that the transit system will still be called Pierce County Transit. And if you could just explain, Danny, to the folks here, how the transition would go, what differences they'll see and what differences they won't see.
Well, first of all, I think the reason we're here, we all know that, is economic reasons, you know, and we can't keep status quo, or, you know, even the richest will go broke, you know. And based on the information we were given, it looks like we were losing some worth, twenty-eight to ten thousand dollars a month on this system, the way it had been run up to this point. And as a profit, for-profit corporation, I don't think you'd find anybody willing to come in and take on those kind of losses. And so naturally, we look everything over and realize we're going to have to make some change. And anytime you have change, you're not going to satisfy everybody. But hopefully, we can find some common ground there that will keep Pierce County a viable transit organization, operation here in Pierce County, serving the residents of Pierce County, and hopefully meeting the majority of their needs. And along with this transition, if we are selected, there will be some cuts, you know, because some of them, some of the trips that we looked at were, they were long-distance trips, taking a vehicle out of service for a majority of portion of the day, taking one person to a doctor's appointment. And, you know, you bring it in thirty to sixty dollars, and it's just, it's just a no-brainer there. You can't, can't provide that kind of service. One thing we may look at doing, we'll have to, on these out-of-area trips to Brunswick and, you know, doctors, I know there's a lot of needs here, but, you know, you can't meet every need that is here. So, we're going to look at all the needs. First, the seniors of Pierce County, we're going to meet their needs, continue to get them to the senior citizen center, their activities, continue to meet the needs of the coordinated DHS transportation services here in Pierce County and throughout the region eleven area that y'all have been providing thus far. One thing that we would want to eliminate is the Medicaid transportation part of it. It's a contractual agreement between the broker for Medicaid, which is logisticare in this region at the present time. And if we, Pierce County does not contract with that broker, that in no way means that the residents of Pierce County will go without Medicaid transportation. The broker will be required, you know, as a broker in the state of Georgia, to provide, a transportation provider to replace Pierce County Transit, to do those trips, to take these people to these doctor's appointments that are outside our service area, you know. And I think that's been one of the problems, is that you've got a, you know, in your efforts to try to meet the needs of everybody in the county, you know, you've done that, but, you know, it's costly to be able to provide that service. So, we're going to have to reduce that radius of service that we're trying to provide and do a great job in a smaller area, I think is pretty well what we've seen from just studying it and digesting the numbers and everything that we were seeing prior to submitting our proposal. At the present time, you have about seven buses in there. I think we're proposing at the onset of this to reduce that down to five and probably run it somewhere between three and four, leaving us one with a backup. And I think those will adequately meet the needs that we would have if we eliminate the VCH contract. And also, bring our service area in to about a ten-mile radius outside the county of Pierce. And I've put a compass on that, and that's, we're not going to really have a lot of disruption in service, I don't think, to those areas, by doing that, the majority of your needs will still be met. And our rates, we want to standardize our rates, that we would charge for these fares. Any trip in the county up to ten miles, we propose three dollars instead of what I think is four dollars now. And anything outside, over ten miles and in the county would be five dollars. Then, once you get to the county line, and you want to go out, you know, area that we just designated that we'll serve, will be five dollars to the county line and picks us in a mile. So, you know, six to eight dollars for a trip to Lake Cross. You know, that's where I feel like Pierce County is kind of like some of the other counties we service, like Cook, Berry, and then Brooks County over on the west side of us here. And, you know, they want to come into the Valdosta program because of the services that are available there. So, where county is pretty well going to be, Pierce is about, you know, about us there, you know. They don't want to be transported into there to, for doctor's appointments and things of that nature. We want to try to keep as many as the present employees that y'all have working here. There's no need to go and reinvent the wheel. You've got good drivers. I've known Angie for many, many years through the Georgia Transit Association, and I've met some of their drivers, and so, you know, there's no need to make a lot of changes there. Unfortunately, reducing the size of the service and the fleet size, there are going to be some cuts to be made, you know. So, we'll try to look at all those facts and interview them, and, you know, just try to figure out what we need to do once y'all decide that's the direction y'all want to go. Okay? See, that's kind of a snapshot.
Any commissioners got any questions? I know that we've had several meetings in which commissioners, one at a time or two at a time, got to attend those meetings. And at that time, they were able to ask questions, and Danny and his group. And so, if y'all have any additional questions that you'd like to ask now sometime soon.
I may add too, I may close, but we are presently operating ten of these transit systems throughout South Georgia here as a third-party operator. So, we're very familiar with the rules, regulations, the required financial reporting, GDOT, contract administration, so, you know, basically, if elected to be your CPO, we fill, you know, fill the shoes of Elka County, you know, and basically do the day-to-day operation of the system. And therefore, also, we would greatly eliminate the financial costs of running the system to the county. Basically, in our proposal, the only thing that we requested the county to do was to meet the capital needs of the program as it goes forward, you know, for its replacement of vehicles and capital assets. And that match is ten percent. So, on forty thousand dollar vehicle, you know, about four thousand dollars. And therefore, right now, although on worst-case scenario, you'd probably end up having to replace two vehicles in a given period. Under GDOT's guidelines, they replace the vehicles every five years or a hundred thousand miles that qualify to be replaced, so that's what.
How many vehicles, Danny, do y'all have in y'all's company?
In our company, we operate, at the present time, ninety vehicles. Forty-five of those are DRT vehicles. And just to kind of give you a snapshot, Lounes County, as big as it is, the population it has, at the present time, we're operating six fifty-eleven vehicles there. Of course, we've got a good-sized fleet of our own there in Lounes County supplementing the needs of that area. But we are meeting the majority of the public trip demands, and the ones that come in and we can't meet. We're putting them on private vehicles, and we are slated to expand that fleet by two up to eight. So, you know, we've been there about ten years, and you can see how we've kind of gradually grown that. So, you know, of course, we're staying right there in our Lounes County area, and we're not going way beyond our boundaries. And fortunately, we're the third-party operator for the other vehicle, other counties around us, so we're able to use those as feeder vehicles to get into the areas and then, you know, help each county out. And then that would be the same here in Pierce County, since we're the third-party operator for where county. I feel like this would be a perfect match for our business model, where we're at right now. We're doing transportation to Brantley County on the other side of you there, and where county. So, this would, like Paul mentioned, well, this will bring the final county, this whole region, into our service area.
Commissioner, for y'all's benefit and for the public's benefit, I was able to call several of the other counties that, amidst services, and I did not get one single complaint or comment, negative comment. Most of the comments I've got were, "We wish we'd done this a long time ago." And they also said, if they, if you furnish them gas and they pay for the gas, if you don't send them bills, they'll, they'll call you within ten days and say, "Where's my bill?" So, I was impressed by that. There's not many companies that, that will call you and say, "Hurry up and send me your bill."
Well, that's one thing we pride ourselves on, is just paying our bills every Friday. So, and we, and another thing, we need those reports or invoices timed where we can report them to GDOT, you know, on our reports that we have to do. So, we've kind of got a little timeline, and we have a system to meet the deadlines that they have on us, where we can get everything reported and submitted to GDOT in a timely manner. Prior to any submissions, normally, it would be sent to the county telephone, and y'all would be updating us, you know, the operating performance of the system, any trips we did, how many miles we've been, you know, cost of operating vehicles, and that type of thing.
I had a call the other day, and I wanted to reassure the public, and I reassured that lady, that Pierce County would not be entertaining this if we were going to be offering less of service than we have now. From all the comments and the feedback I've got from other counties, the service will be as good, if not better, than what we have at the present time. So, I appreciate Danny. I appreciate you taking your time out and coming down here. And if commissioners don't have any.
Only other question I had, and Mr. Danny answered that a minute ago, I was going to talk with you about the matching money, the ten percent.
Right.
And that, that way I'm saying, that's going to be our only cost.
That's going to be the only cost.
Talk about that again, just a minute.
Okay. Every year, whenever you go to capital assets, this can be computer systems, it can be, you know, radios, or, you know, any capital assets approved by GDOT. When you go and put them in the capital budget for the coming year, it's, a match is required. The Federal Transit Authority pays eighty percent of any of these costs for these items on vehicles and capital stuff. And then, the state pays ten percent, and the local match is ten percent. And so, that's all that the county would be responsible for, is the capital assets, because those are y'all's assets. They would not be ours. We'd just be operating for you, providing services to your residents and citizens of Pierce County.
You also do the maintenance on those vehicles?
Yes. There would be no, no, no requirement of Pierce County in any way to come into.
That's my point there, didn't I? I mean, we're getting it in some timely fashion. We'd know what we'd need to be budgeted.
We, I'm doing budgets right now for F Y thirteen. I'm just, I've just got them completed, and they're in the district office right now. We take the graph and we look at our mileage on our vehicles, current miles, and we try to project out what the mileage will be June thirtieth of two thousand twelve. The fiscal year starts July of two thousand twelve. So, you have to kind of project out how many miles you drive that vehicle a month, and the current mileage, and see where you're going to be at June thirtieth. Because if it doesn't have a hundred thousand miles on it June thirtieth, or it is five years old, then that vehicle is not even eligible to be replaced. And then, if it's a good vehicle, we may not even want to replace it then, you know. It just depends on, on what your maintenance has been on it. We keep very good records electronically on all our maintenance services done on our vehicles. That's all I could see, you know, right now, from, you know, maybe they're going with statewide programs. We just recently went through that, that our company over there, we've got the brand-new software, the latest and greatest, as GDOTs got out. We're, we've been live on it about three weeks now, and it optimizes and just loads your buses for you based on geography, which is, you know, latitude, wherever the trip begins and where it ends. And it's going to make us run a lot more efficient than, than just trying to go by the seat of your pants on schedule. We're about to get to the next level with our program, we're putting mobile data units in the vehicle where we can send manifest electronically from our office, scheduling dispatching, we'll go electronically to the van. When the person gets on, they'll hit a couple of buttons, it'll automatically send the data back to our office, validate the trip, verify that it's done and ready to be built in a month. So, technology's moving real fast, and we're trying to stay on the leading edge of it. And so, I don't see any real expenses coming up other than a vehicle replacement in the next five years, probably, you know. Because all this technology that I was speaking of was taken care of with Aura money, which was a hundred percent federal money, and therefore, you know, they're just beginning to implement some of those items there. As far as the fuel is concerned, we'd just like to get that at the county rate, which is usually exempt taxes, where we can pass that savings on to operating the system for the pension. That's, that's the only reason we would, we'd like to do that.
I have two questions. If you could get seven hundred fifty thousand dollars at this time, run the ambulance service, transit service. If you run out of money, are we to offer seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run this service?
Or whatever.
I'm just, I'm just using that as the illustration. If you run out of money, do you call for the county's aid?
You mean, if we do? Oh, no. There's no, absolutely, and I've got a proposed agreement here, which is our standard draft copy of our third-party agreement. It clearly spells out the revenues we take in is ours, any losses we incur is ours. And it spells out exactly what the county's responsibilities are here. They're basically provide us with rolling stock and access to the fuel. That's pretty well in a nutshell, you know. We would like to have your assistance in the transition from county to private home, which we would, to meet GDOT's requirements, we would need to have some public hearings to educate the public and let them know what we're doing, and to help us with this transition, you know, to make sure everybody's aware of what we're trying to do here, and try to get everybody's cooperation, you know. I suppose we're publisher today on the telephone of a local paper, and tried to reiterate to him, you know, that we're here trying to help Pierce County, you know, and not, we don't want to be, you know, run out of town, because we're here. I know there's probably going to be some people unhappy with it anytime you got change, but hopefully, we're going to be here and, and find some common ground that will make it a win-win for Pierce County, citizens of Pierce County, and we could be here for a long, long time.
Any more questions? Mr. Danny, you said that we know when you're going to do, you should leave from seven to five, which is going to be a reduction in employees. For the employees here, you stated on the record that you said that you, you won't go outside the current employees to pick the ones that's going to stay?
That's right.
Okay.
And we want, and probably we're going. From my understanding, the majority of the drivers here are part-time.
Right.
And so, we would probably be trying to, you know, give them more hours if that's their interest in it.
Right. Right. That's right. But I just, you know, just for them, I mean, I heard you say that you would not go outside.
No. Not if we, that's going to be our first, first line to fill these positions. And hopefully, at the end of the day, when all this is done, all the thing you find that's any different is your paycheck's coming from a different zip code.
That's right.
So, we've done this before, not, over in Thomas County, we were, we had some transitions over there. And, you know, it's been very smooth, you know, a lot of time. Like I said, a lot of people are hesitant on the get-go because of the change, because it's been this way all along. And y'all grew this into what it is today. And I know there's a lot of emotional passions to your program by a lot of people. And I know there are people out here in the county, just like the people in Cook County, and Brooks County, everywhere we at, they come attached to these drivers, and they feel like they're family. And a lot of these people, that's the only people they socialize with is these transit drivers. So, we want to make this as famous as possible, if it is pleasurable, move forward in this direction.
It's my understanding that some of the services or transports will be less than they are now?
Yes, on a basic trip, just right now, I think it's four dollars, it'll be three dollars, you know. And we're going to try to come up with a standard rate for the Lake Cross area, which, you know, is probably within a one to two-mile difference, if you put a compass on it, and measure from Pierce, from Blackshear to about anywhere you want to go in the radius of the doctor's offices, the college out on the, on the corridor three out there, or Walmart down on forty, on US one, you know, you're going to be about the same mileage at the end of the day. And, you know, I think we'll just come up with like probably a flat fee, just come up to get to that point, or any of those areas. And, you know, we're just basically going to eliminate some of these long-run trips. And not saying we will eliminate them all together, we just have to visit it and see what the demand is, and see if maybe it might be in the county's best interest if we can get here and come up with a particular date to do a particular trip to a runs of doctors. If you've got enough to go to make it a viable trip for us, you know. And we'll need the help, if y'all do decide to move forward, we will need to move fairly quick in getting a letter of termination with logisticare, because I don't know what your contract says, but however, they have a thirty-day clause in there. And you don't want to jeopardize any funds that you have coming to you that you've already earned by providing Medicaid trips, by not giving them timely notice. And if you want us to start January first, we would want to get that contract terminated, where they would not be looking to Pierce Transit, provide those transports in this area here. And then, with other, other housekeeping item, we would need to get our contract amended with the regional government commission over in Warrick and Lake Cross there to include Pierce County as the, of the county in our contract. And that would give us all eighteen of the county's in this, this region here then, which I think both of these items can be done once y'all make a decision on what you need to do. The drug and alcohol policy, I don't know if y'all just recently updated yours or not, but we would probably bring the hours and just bring it up to speed, just where it would be consistent all the way through with everything that we've done thus far. So, I mean, those are little things that we'll just have, gives a little to do this.
Our staff, our staff will be there to work with you and get through the paperwork part. Any more questions? I think, Danny, we were probably one of the first counties to be in transit in this area.
Y'all been out a long time.
And the state, eighteen counties in the area, seems like we're the last one to set up the change, the private contract. I mean, Ms. Angie and her staff have done a great job.
They have.
The market and the timing and the conditions have changed. It's time for something different. I think the board's concern is to make sure that patients or the customers are taken care of with the treatment. It's important.
That's, that's what's all, that's what we're here for. That's what we all here for. We're not going to do that. We don't need to be in this business.
That's exactly right. And obviously, if you guys have done a great job, these other.
And you've got about eight or ten transit people in here. I want them to know that they won't ask you anything, so. I want them to know that they won't ask you anything, so they can be.
Okay, I'll, I'll try. Just don't shoot me. I'll turn around. I'll, I'll open myself up, you know, if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to try, try to answer any questions, you know? There may, may be a lot of unknowns still at this time because, you know, really hadn't really went much further than what I've just talked about here tonight.
I want to understand the team's outrates.
Okay, that, that is what we're looking at around Pierce County boundaries is what we're looking at.
You've covered the whole county, right?
Yes, I've, I've put together a little, let me see if I can pull this out here. Just, I didn't make any copies, assuming I was just playing with it. This right here is a map. I don't know if it's hard for y'all to see probably. But I, I, this is Blackshear, right here in the middle. And I've got Pierce County outlined right here. And I've went about ten miles all the way around it here, which takes in the Hunter, Waynesville, all the way around almost to Alma. And way up to Wearsburg and down to the swamp on the south there. Just about that's, that's what I'm saying, a ten mile radius of Pierce County. Within, within, that's, that's how much area you, you have right there, y'all.
That's where Waynesville would be further than ten miles, Mr. Danny. Might, might even go.
I've just measured from the boundaries off, not Pierce, not Blackshear, the boundaries of the county. The county line, that's what we're talking about, the county line. And that was just using the scale here, ten, you know, that much, you could go in ten miles. I kind of just went out that far just around it, you know? And that's what, what it gave, you know? Also, I did another little projection here based on if you wanted to use Blackshear as a center and say go out twenty mile radius, that's what you get there. And when you put the two together, there's not a whole lot of difference really. I mean, you know, and probably the majority of your trips are going to be in your populated areas. That's what I'm guessing. But I know you're going to have these rural trips because we do everywhere else, you know? Like we say, we are in rural Georgia and it's a whole different type of business down here than it is up in Lawrenceville or some of these other populated areas up, up in North Georgia. Anybody else have anything? And this is not in stone, you know? We're just, we're just trying to figure out what we can do to, to try to meet the needs, you know? And, and at the same time, cut that eight thousand dollar loss down, you know, where it's manageable to do.
Danny, I've worked for Pierce County Transit for about eighteen years.
Okay.
I am a dispatcher and I have been told I would not have a job, which I understand. Uh, I've worked for the best boss that I have ever had in my life. Angie Bowlen has done a wonderful job with this transit. I feel in my opinion, if we could have tightened our belt, if we had been warned, if we could have raised our prices, that we may could have pulled this thing out ourselves. Uh, the NIDS, that's great, I've heard. I mean, my daughter has run it before. I know it's got a lot of different rules and regulations, uh, looking forward to my whip. About time to get a hold of somebody to get a ride. I promised several people that. But I just wanted the commissioners and everybody to know that I've enjoyed my tenure here. And when I started, it was conservative services. It was under conservative services. And the county took over for some reason.
Yeah.
And that's how long it has been. And it's been a good, good job and a good service. In fact, I thought it was worth just a service. Because any of them is a service, one of the people. It didn't seem like it was a moneymaker thing. It was not supposed to have been a moneymaker.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to voice my opinion and.
Well, well, unfortunately, you know, we, the size of the company we are, we have consolidated our operations and with technology as it is, we do, you know, we can, we can, we can operate from anywhere as long as we've got internet and communications to our drivers just about, you know? And we've already got these systems in place in, in Valdosta, that's our main office. And, you know, we've been managing all these other seventeen counties from that operation for, since nineteen ninety-eight. So, you know, it just comes with the times, unfortunately. I mean, Pierce County's not the only county that's struggling financially. I mean, everybody you talk to, they've got, about everyone of them's got a deficit they're trying to manage, you know? And, you know, even in business, we're, we're faced with these challenges every day. So, and, and I echo what you just said about Angie's great job she's done here from, from New Orleans, you know, whenever they've been, you know, y'all been around a long time.
You say you put, put away with the logistic here, okay. How about medical, because we have a lot of people in Pierce County that still got the doctors, the doctor's house. We kind of made sure that Ms. does any kind of medical at all?
Oh, yes, yes, we'll do medical. I mean, that's, it better be, it'll be public transit is what it is. We don't do any Medicaid in this area over here. But it'll be, we'll be doing our DHS contract service, which is your senior citizens, your DFAX clients, people going to day treatment programs. And, and then we'll be doing public transit to take care of the needs of people trying to further their education, going to colleges and schools, going to work, you know? You get these people trained to, to be self-sufficient, then, then they don't have a way to get to work, then they fall right back into cracks again. So, so we're going to be here to provide that service and keep the hours of service the same as what you have now. So, you know, just five days a week. You know, sure, there's a lot of people who may want to go Saturday and Sunday somewhere, but, you know, you just can't meet the needs of everybody, you know? And that's been the situation, you know, in South Georgia from, for many, many years. This is a rural public transit service. This is not a MARTA or Chatham area transit in Savannah. You know, this is a rural portion of, of public transit. And, and I tell all the counties where we at, you're very fortunate to have what you got because there's a lot of counties that, you know, that don't have near the quality of service that y'all got here in Pierce County.
One more question. Do y'all have compassion for people like, I mean, I know y'all are a brave business, I understand that. But the way Pierce County, I've been here twelve years. And if this person on dialysis and that person's so sick, we have to stop along the road and wait for that person because they're throwing out their ears at that, you know what I'm saying? If I link y'all and acknowledge that, well, you've got to get them back on, you've got to do this, you know what I'm saying? That person can't do that.
No, if you, you don't have compassion for people, you don't need to be in this transportation business here. And we, we've learned that a long, long time ago. And we do about thirty-five thousand trips a month, you know, for DHS, D C H. I mean, and, and a lot of our trips in our larger areas are dialysis related. And so we do know the needs of those special clients. And they're special, they have special needs, and we try to meet those needs as well.
With those clients like dialysis, Medicaid pays for their trips. So now the clients, they can't stop paying out of their pocket?
No, what's going to happen is that they will, once we give them a thirty day notice to say that, that Pierce Transit is no longer going to provide that Medicaid, Medicaid transportation, which has been being paid by, for them to Pierce County. They will drive, they'll bring X, Y, Z transportation in. We'll start transporting that, that person to their required medical appointment. So therefore, the people in Pierce County, their needs in that area are still going to be met. So they'll be met by a company other than Pierce Transit. You know, so therefore, we're not, you know, basically going to lose any money on those trips, you know? So that's a deficit in, in, in meeting the needs of these other clients and hopefully the losses down there. You know, we, we make it manageable, make it into a profitable situation.
Because as, as now, a lot of our trips are Medicare trips. You know, that's where a lot of.
Well, unfortunately, with the times right now, economic factors as they are, you know, you're going to have the rolls of Medicare going to be continually increasing, increasingly high.
And if we don't have the chance, you know, like I said, some of it's a part-time. People that are drivers losing that aspect of our transport. I don't see how we're going to get more out.
Well, it depends on, you know, what, what, what the needs are and what we can do, you know, without that. You know, I just, I just, if you know that's where you're losing your money at, it's kind of letting go. And that's, I think that's the way it is right now. And all this area is up for bid right now and they haven't got a new bid, new broker select yet. So, you know, one thing about this transportation business I've learned in the years that I've been in it is, is you can rest assured there's going to be change. There's change every morning when I wake up and get an officer. And that's what makes it so challenging is, is the change. If you try to doubt it, you stay here, I'll do the best I can.
Any others have to take, take it?
I haven't gotten, I haven't talked with the county. I don't know what the pay rate is or anybody yet. Because like I said, this is the first meeting I've had with the commissioners since we presented our proposal to them. And, you know, we're probably set up a meeting over here if they decide to go forward. We'll come over and we'll have us a sit-down meeting in a, in a conference room somewhere where we can all sit and talk eyeball to eyeball and, you know, get a good feel for what's going on now for our logistics and day-to-day operations.
Thank you, Danny.
Anybody else?
Do you feel like there would be somebody else in the league?
Well, I know there will be some because of the reduction from seven to five vehicles. I mean, that's a given out there. It may be that two people working part-time on one bus, you know, that's, you know, the gap everybody's got. We'll look at all that and consider all that when making a decision.
You're also covering a lot of other questions when y'all meet.
Yes, 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 yeah. And those types, I feel like those are better answered in a smaller setting while we're in tonight, you know, around companies. And I'll, I'll leave you this, this draft copy here if y'all want to look it over. I, I, I should have made more, but I'll try to make you some copies of it. And feel free to give me a call if y'all have any other segments or concerns.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Can I get Mr. Danny? For a moment.
Make the motion, Mr. Chairman, we move forward with our process of switching over and privatizing Pierce Transit.
I hear a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor of that signature?
Aye.
Let the chair just talk for him. Second item on the agenda is discussion on EMS. Mr. Dave Wills is here to discuss and answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to be here tonight. I've had a privilege of standing in this room before and have been to Pierce County several times. I was county here not yet. I think I've been here five or six times over the last three years in various capacities. But tonight I'm here to talk to you about EMS. I heard through the grapevine that you guys were thinking about some changes with respect to EMS. And I made a phone call to Paul and we had a conversation. And I told him about a process that is available through the State Office of EMS. And I'm here tonight to describe that process. Obviously, I work for the Association of County Commissioners, but I've been involved in several of these EMS assessment teams over the last three years. Having been invited by Sam Cunningham, who is the Region Seven EMS Director based out of Columbus. I live in that region and served as a county commissioner there in Webster County as a full-time chairman for twelve years and served on the board for two years prior to that. And in that timeframe and in my capacity as chairman, developed a real strong passion for public safety, including EMS. And I was once trained as an E M T a long time ago, back in the early nineteen eighties. So I have a, a real deep sense of what public safety is about and particularly what EMS is and how important it is to rural communities. So in that regard, let me describe to you the EMS assessment process. The purpose of the process, should you choose to invite the team here, would be to examine the existing operations of your EMS, to take a look at policies and procedures, and then upon the conclusion of our work, to submit to you a report, which would detail our findings and also make recommendations, if in fact, anywhere in order. The team would be comprised of likely five people, possibly six. It would include me representing A C C G. And my role would be to take a look at your administrative policies, not with respect to EMS specifically, but the county administration. I would look at budget. I would look at a number of factors related to how you actually operate, including your personnel policy. The State Office of EMS would provide one and possibly two individuals. Certainly, Sam Cunningham out of Columbus would be involved as he has been on every assessment that's been done over the last couple of decades. And in the last three years that I've been involved, he's gone each one of those. We would likely have an additional person from this EMS at the state level. The most recent process we engaged in included Dr. Jill Mabley, who is the Deputy Director at the state level and is also the Medical Director for Cherokee County. It would also include at least one representative of a private EMS company. That private representative would not be from this region and would not be someone interested in providing private EMS service to your county. In other words, they could not come here with the expectation of learning about your system and then offer up a proposal to privatize your EMS. They have to sign a waiver saying that they are not interested. And the last three teams that I've served on private has been represented by Shane Garrison with Puckett EMS out of Cobb County. And Shane is an outstanding resource, has tremendous base of knowledge, and brings a lot of capacity in his participation. We would also have one team member representing a county EMS. In every team that I participated in, this has been a lady out of Mitchell County. There's been a longtime county EMS director there. So you can see that we would have representatives of state EMS, private, county-based, and A C C G. The scope of work that we would engage in would involve an examination of the operations. We would look at your facilities. We would take a look at management, training, policies, procedures, human resources, the full gamut is what we would take a look at. We would involve in the discussion, people from your county. And that would include discussions with your EMS director, with the E M Ts and paramedics. And those would likely be separate meetings. We would meet with your director first, then we would meet with the staff. We would meet with the medical director. We would also meet with representatives of the hospital, nursing home, sheriff, nine-one-one, fire, first responders, anybody and everybody who has a reaction or interaction with EMS. We want to talk to them. Because it's important to understand the scope of EMS from everybody's perspective. And often those are different. We found that out, at least I have, in all of the teams that I participated in. You get a different response depending upon who you're talking to. So to understand the totality, we would want to talk to all of these people. The duration of the study would be basically three days. The first day that we would come in, we would arrive around lunch or perhaps a little before. Our team would get together and have a brief discussion. And then we would want to meet with the Board of Commissioners early in the afternoon, probably around one o'clock, and hear from you what your concerns are, what your interests are, and see if there are any last-minute directions that you would want to give to us. We would then begin the process of meeting with all the individuals that I've identified. We would be here on the second day engaged in a full day of meetings with those individuals. And then on the third day, we'd conclude our work likely by lunch or shortly thereafter. Then our team will spend an hour or two discussing our findings and formulating some initial recommendations. And then we'd like to meet with you in the afternoon of that third day to give to you a preliminary oral report. The final report that would be prepared would come to you in a written form. It would be a voluminous document. I don't know the page number, but just characterizing it, a big, thick document that would probably be a hundred and fifty pages plus. The meat of the findings and recommendations would be in the first forty or fifty pages. The rest would be a dunder that would identify rules and regulations, any relevant and pertinent information that might be of interest to you in terms of how you would, how we approach the, the subject and then how you would respond to the recommendations. The cost to you would be very modest. Of the team members, the only ones that you would have to pay for in terms of their travel and lodging and meals would be those who represent private EMS or the county-based EMS. There would be no charge for me to come. There would be no charge for anyone who is working as a state employee. So in all likelihood, you would pay for two people, their private lodging and meals. I can't estimate what that would be for you because I don't know who's going to be on the team yet. But if I could assume for a moment that we had the lady from Mitchell County and the gentleman from Cobb County, you're looking at literally the travel distance times the state mileage reimbursement and the state per diem for the other expenses. So I think it would be a very, very modest expense for you there. If you choose to move forward with this process, we would likely come in mid-February or later. Certainly no later than sometime in March. The reason that I say it would be that long before we would come is because everybody who would participate in this team has a full-time job. We come because we want to participate, we want to help the counties in this capacity. But everybody else has responsibilities that they have to fulfill day in and day out. So if you, if you choose to invite us in, and once that work is done over the course of three days, So if you, if you choose to invite us in, and once that work is done over the course of three days, then we would begin to prepare the report. And again, if we could devote ourselves exclusively to this work, we could prepare a report within a couple of weeks. But because we all do have other responsibilities on our full-time jobs, then it takes longer. So I would expect for you to have a written report within three to four months after we leave here. So you're looking at an extended period, if you wish to engage in it, it might be early, early June before we can get your report back. But considering that the cost is so modest and considering the level of experience that would be brought to bear, I think that you will find the report to be well worth your weight and the small amount of investment that you would have to make there. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
First of all, I'd like to say, Dave, thank you so much for taking your time out and coming down here to speak with us.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate, I just wanted everybody to get an idea of how Dave and I got together on this because EMS is probably one of the most important departments that we have in our county. And as, when I came on board, one of my responsibilities was to take each department and go through it and look for savings or if there were any savings available. And there was a lot of discussion that took place. Ken and I have talked a couple of times, the commissioners and I have talked several times. And this is such an important issue that I wanted to make sure that we take P and the staff out of it and put it in the hands of professionals and people that know this. That's not my expertise, it's EMS, that's our EMS department that we have. And the only way I knew to evaluate that is to have other EMS experts dealing with our EMS folks to come up with an evaluation that shows, gives us a picture of how that department is functioning. Then at that point, it's up to the commissioners to make their assessment and to work with the EMS department on the changes, if there are any to be made. And I think it's a real good process and I appreciate, I'm just so thankful that ACCG is there and is willing to help us evaluate something that is not our expertise, but it is y'all's and I really appreciate it.
Questions, anybody got any questions?
I don't have questions, I mean, we got your EMS department, you know, I just want it to be as efficient and best as it can be. Yeah, if there's some improvements, great, but if, you know, we need to keep pushing the wheel a little.
That's right.
And I mean, the cost, I mean, it looks to me like I've heard it's going to cost this much, I've heard it's going to cost this much. But it's obvious it's just a...
It won't be more than 1,500, 1,800 or above.
It ain't be that much.
No, and I, and to be honest with you, I think we should probably do more departments we need. After this evaluation goes through, I mean, all it's going to do is help the department run better. I mean, you find the weak links, you fix them or make changes.
Commissioner Bennett, if I could, I want to address what you said. I would hope that nobody within your EMS department views the team coming in as a threat. Because I don't see it that way, I've never seen it approached that way in any of the counties that I've worked with. It's come in to do an assessment. Quite frankly, any good manager, what is or her soft, should be open to any constructive criticism, no matter what the business, no matter what the discipline. So I think that you will find that at the conclusion of the process, the report is going to offer recommendations, but not a lot of criticism. If we find shortcomings, obviously we're going to identify those, but it'll never be done in a way that's a threat to you, but...
Yeah, Ken, they will speak on it too, I don't know. I mean, he's, he'll be doing some conversation too, you know, we... He's going to be part of it.
I think that's going to be something that Dave will look forward to and Ken will also because Ken's got a lot of experience in this department. And I know that he's, he told me, he and I spoke, and he's been on one of those committees also. And so I feel sure that y'all are going to have a good time talking about the operation. And when you leave, you're going to have a really good picture of what we got. And then as a result of the report, all of our commissioners will be comfortable with what we've got.
Well, I think it's important to state too, that oftentimes, and this is my experience, having been a county commissioner and now having, sir, excuse me, served with ACCG for three years, in the three years that I've been with the Association, I have worked in 152 counties. I'm going to get the other seven before the year's out. But, long story short here is that oftentimes commissioners do not understand EMS. One of the chief criticisms that I hear from county commissioners about EMS is that there's too much overtime. I have yet to find an EMS operation in the state that doesn't use overtime. Now, can you minimize overtime? There are strategies that you can use to do that. But typically, you see EMTs and paramedics working on 24-hour shifts. And if you try to go to a straight 40-hour week, there's just practically no way to manage that. So part of the process here is not just to identify issues within EMS, but also to serve as an educational tool whereby we help county commissioners understand what EMS does, what they're doing well. And to the extent that you understand the business better, then you're going to be in a better position to make informed decisions with regard to how that operation continues in the future.
Well, that's very true because my, my experience with EMS has been riding in the back of an ambulance. So I was, I am not the person that can make the determinations that you guys have. And I wanted to be fair to Ken and the rest of the folks in that department to make sure that that doesn't happen, that they are judged by their peers.
Well, I'm looking forward to assisting you, assuming that you ask us to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken?
Appreciate Mr. Wells being here. And yes, we've been involved with EMS since the 10th before. And they basically have turned out, just like Mr. Wells said. They showed that EMS is not overfunded nor overworked. Most of the time EMS is working, I don't see any county in the state of Georgia to allow EMS to populate where everybody's sitting around not doing anything. EMS costs a lot of money. And I think when we get down to it, we're talking about my supervisor from the whole perspective. But in 2005, that all changed with EMS. And the county asked me to become the fire and the EMA director, take over the whole expanded road. We built this road and we're continuing to build it. But the EMS staff worked with the fire department and their management. My supervisor obviously all this, so when we have disasters, it was my staff in there doing the paperwork for the road department. When we have fire, when your major inventory comes in, it's my staff that helps do that. So it's a interworking relationship, just like he said, EMS, fire, law enforcement, all together. The assessment would be a great thing, but we need to decide, because ultimately, like he said, it's going to come back to the board to make the decision, do we keep the same level of service we have now, or do we diminish service down? I'm proud I've been here for 29 years. Three times this year, we've had to call from Mitchell Lake. With the staff we've got, we can handle up to four calls at one time. That's what the citizens have come to expect. Less than eight, nine percent of my calls are out of the 15-minute response time. So put any county that wants to match the numbers with us and I'll compare them. The assessment team, you want to bring them in and do this assessment, say that. But it's ultimately going to come back to us, the ones in the county that have to make that decision. I stand beside the EMS, yes, it costs money. We've gradually, over the last four or five years, been decreasing on price and cost. Things go up, things come down. But supervisors are what keeps us able to do that. They're able to watch fluctuations. You can look in the budget here this year and see where we've trimmed down in our maintenance just by moving vehicles. Over extended costs and supplies and stuff, we look for the best price and we buy it for it. But, you know, that's what I've got to say. You know, Mr. Wells says, and on the ACCG paper, it says on their website, that you have to put the best into EMS equipment line. We have the equipment that's capable of meeting all the standards that they, it's been told that it was Cadillac, it's standard equipment, but it meets our needs for our community. I don't know what else, we've been around this table for four months now with EMS, going from privatization to cutting budgets. And I think we've shown that we'll cut as much as we can cut. We start talking about cutting staff, and we're talking about eliminating service. We're going to be calling counties in, and when you're talking about counties, you're talking about Bradley County, which has a truck 10 miles away, 20 miles away, and 30 miles away from us, Ware County, which is nine miles, that is stressed. Bacon County, 30 miles, Atlin County, 30 miles. Those are the trucks that we call to back us up. So when you start adding those response times and those minutes are clicking, and that's what we're talking about. We can't transport four at one time. But between the two ambulances and our supervisors and me, four calls can be handled around, put key personnel to handle and make a determination what's needed and where it needs to be done. And if we take the supervisor's away, like we've talked about, put them back on the truck, no way that I can then the fire and EMA and still worry about the ambulance call being handled. That's the relevance of a supervisor. They handle these overflow calls and they monitor these trucks and can get them back to service and go. That is a 24-hour a day, seven-day week job. And there's not very many counties around that does not utilize supervisors in that capacity. Yes, I've taken the supervisor off of working relief to handle these emergency third and fourth calls. We can use them some, but every time we have them on the truck, they'll be there and they'll call other counties in to assist us with transporting our people to the hospital. Some people just don't have the time to wait for them. Sorry. Thank you.
You know, I'd be first to say, I don't think none of us four have any problem really. But you, you, you might throw a little bit of money away, but we can't accept you. I'm thinking that Mr. Wells can get us some information to help us.
It'll help us be stronger.
Are you agreeable with that?
And that's obvious to see. And I need, we need to get business where we can go to work.
Right, right. I know you've been through four months of hell.
That's...
We've got to stop this. Now, your motion that we go try to get help.
For who, Mr. Chairman?
I was saying, all in favor of that signal, that?
Aye.
And the odds hand.
Can we ask some questions, Randy?
Yeah.
A question.
What are we talking about here? Are we fixing the budget or are y'all saying there's something wrong with EMS and things to be fixed?
Let me reiterate that for you because I'm the one that started this. Because it's my responsibility. We're not trying to replace EMS or do anything else. We're just trying to make sure that EMS is functioning correctly and we're spending our money correctly. And the best way to do that is the way that Mr. Wells has explained. And for the cost that it's going to cost us, it's a no-brainer. Anybody that runs any kind of business would be doing the same thing. And you've got to be good stewards over the money. We're spending taxpayers' money, and I don't agree with the chairman, we don't have to agree. But I don't want to throw away a penny. I want to make sure that every penny we're spending is money well spent. And I can't make that determination, it has to be like Mr. Wells is talking about.
Okay, but you're talking about the functioning part of it. If we were not functioning like we're supposed to be, we have state regulations, state rules, everything, we could get a license every year. Everyone in trust, all of our records are checked, everything is... You're saying functional and money poor? That's what I'm asking you. Are you saying there's something wrong with EMS internal, not the money part, internal?
The question I had was the three supervisors, and I had talked to other EMS departments, and none of them had three supervisors that did not work a truck. That was the only thing that I found, other than we buy the best equipment on the market and that's fine. But none of the other companies that I talked to bought that particular type of product, but they all had products that worked for them and provided the same service that we provide.
Well, the thing is, we're setting standards like them backwards. We have the best...
Well, we're not, we're not going back.
We...
If we don't, may I in a row?
Well, it's different.
And trying to say this as respectfully as possible. I've been here for a little over 10 years, I've been in EMS for 20 years. And all respect to him due, I can see some benefit from him coming down here. One thing he said was the fact that he, training. Now, if they come in here and they recommend that y'all pay for our training, which y'all don't do now, you know, are y'all going to pick that tab up? If we back up and do away with the supervisors, yes, sir, with all respect due to y'all, we are backing up. We're not moving forward. I have worked for services before that did not have the supervisors, and I've worked for services before that does. One of the advantages of the supervisors is this and this alone. In the event that someone is sick, someone has an emergency, someone, whatever, has to be out, that supervisor gets on that truck and that supervisor rides that truck. No overtime. Nobody has to be drafted, nobody has to be called in, that supervisor rides that truck. That does away with anybody having any overtime for that particular day. So if you do that, and one of our supervisors is in, in charge of training that tries to finance training for us to be able to, available for, that makes that available for us to know where it's taking place so we can go do that, if you put them on the truck, they don't have time for that.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying that the reason why we're calling that team in to help us with this is because we don't know if that's right or wrong. Now, we need somebody to tell us that knows the business better than any of us up here to say that, yeah, you're doing it right, or you're not doing it right. Or you're doing it right, but let me make a suggestion that might help you do it a little bit better. Or whatever the recommendation may be. I just think it's very, very proper at this time, as we're looking at each department, to take any help that we can get from people that know it better than, that know it better than we do on a particular individual item, and listen to what they've got to say. If it's good, great. If we don't need any corrections, if everything you're doing is perfect, hallelujah. But at least we'll have experts to go along and back up Ken and his department saying, yeah, what we're doing is right.
So what you're telling us, the recommendations that he makes and his team makes, whether it be for us or against us, you're willing to buy by those?
I don't get it, but the commissioners will be the one that gets that, and they'll have to digest that information and decide, you know, based on the information that the report gives us, what actions they want to take. If they want to institute more training, whatever it may be. It may not be, you know, I don't believe in making something a lot worse before you even know what the answers are. You know, let's just see what the report brings out and then see what, what happens. It may not...
What the guys recommend.
It may not be anything at all.
There you go.
But can we just say this about the supervisor, okay? It takes three people to work a cardiac arrest. If my other truck, say I've got a cardiac arrest here in Blackshear, in the other truck comparison, that I'm not... Either that man there or the supervisor's going to come to us. It takes three, one to drive, two to ride, okay? The supervisors for the past several, several years have been saving it around here. The other day, we had seven calls at one time, seven. You had Ken on the call, you had me on the call, you had the supervisor who was already on the truck because we don't have a spot this field right now on the truck. You had Leonard Roberts going to a house by his cell as a first responder. Then you had Bradley County and Ware County in here, okay? But Pierce County handled five of the seven calls in less than two and a half hours. The calls of the way we all worked together and with the supervisor, even though the supervisor was on the truck.
I'm not disagreeing with...
But, and that's what I'm trying to take out, if you keep harping on the supervisors, yes, it's more money.
I'm not harping, I made a statement, okay, that I talked to other, three other counties, and none of them had three supervisors like we did.
Did those companies operate fire and EMA all the time? Do those counties, do their...
No.
They don't, so they don't know what...
They specialize in...
Our county does?
They know what our county does.
What about Mr. Wells here? Everybody he talked about was EMS, and I think it's wonderful if you want to bring in somebody to verify everything straight, but that these people that are coming in, they're straight EMS, are they aware of when one county has operating all these different departments? And the necessities that are needed to do that?
That's a good question.
Well, if I understand your question correctly, you're asking about the credentials of those people who would be on the team?
No, not the credentials. I'm asking, you had stated the different EMS, the county, all these different people that would come in. He just stated that the counties he's talked to that don't have supervisors, that they do not operate fire and EMA from the same director either. So those counties basically can't be compared to Pierce County. So these people that would be brought in by you, you said are all EMS. Are they familiar whenever one county is able to cover everything that needs to be covered in a safety manner for the county, responsible?
I feel reasonably confident in saying that our, the collective wisdom of our team would understand that dynamic. Sam Cunningham, whom I mentioned by name, is a former State Office of EMS Director. So he understands things from a state perspective as well as the district perspective. I certainly understand what it's like to be in a small county. The county that I'm in is much smaller than Pierce County. So I understand how important it is to have the first responders that we reference. In my county, we have a great group of first responders. We do not have, out of the teams that I've been on, we have not worked a combined fire and EMS. Is y'all's combined?
Pretty much.
I don't mean pretty much, I mean.
This guy right here, right there. Fire, EMS, and EMA.
Excuse me, I mean, is it formally combined into a fire and EMS so that you enjoy the exemption under the parallel standards act? Okay, so you don't have a combined service. What you have is two separate services that work closely together. So I think that when, when our team comes in, we can and will be cognizant of, particularly because you all will tell us, those of you who we interviewed, you will give us the full range of information, and that will all be considered in terms of the recommendations that we made. Again, I would encourage you not to look at this process as a threat. If you are doing a jam-up job in every respect, you're gonna get a report that basically says to the commissioner, you're doing a jam-up job. You may tweak it here and there, but if there are any places where we believe that the commissioners could and should consider changes that would help create a better economy so that you're getting more for the, for what you spend, then we're gonna make those recommendations. But I personally don't see it as a threat. I would never wanna come into a county and threaten anybody. So I believe that the process is fair. I believe it's gonna be accurate in terms of the report. And what the commission does with the recommendations is their determination. I would tell you, the first report, the first report I was involved in writing, the commissioners basically chose to do nothing because they didn't have the political will to do some of the things that we recommended. And that system really needed to be overhauled. I can tell you that after two years, they finally made some of the choices and made some changes in that particular county. So it's going to be the decision of these five men who sit around the table that make those decisions. But please don't look at this as a threat. I think it's going to prove to be an asset for your community.
Well, it lived.
This system doing a jam-up job in the county there.
How do you determine who you're gonna interview?
Pardon?
How do you determine who you're gonna interview? I think the people you interview should be the ones that work for these people. It's like the fire department. I think each has a way it works with them all the time when doing your interviews.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of us that's real close to my things.
There's been a pretty standard, pretty standard format. When we come in, we meet with the commissioners first. We almost always meet with the EMS director next. And then we go through a process of meeting with the medics, paramedics, EMTs, everybody that's involved. So it's pretty much a standard process. We wanna meet with everybody. The last one of these teams that I was in, we actually had some very, very difficult circumstances between EMS personnel. I've not heard anything here tonight that leads me to believe that was the case. But in that last county we were at, the camps had basically divided in two. So there was one group of, of medics that supported one group and another. We met with them separately. We were able to figure out in advance that was an issue. So we said, if you're aligned with this person, come meet with us now. And if you're aligned with this, we'll meet with us later. So we were able to get the perspective without having anybody's words subject to any repercussion because someone might have overheard something from the other camp.
We wouldn't feel like this if it weren't for the past four months, the way we've been circling the rain with privatization, this idea that we didn't get drugs, things like we used to, can't get supplies like we used to. Everybody here, we, we are the lowest paid county around. We've been here four years, all of us were ever raised, okay? We're still keeping, for the past four months, several of us have gotten to the point where we don't wanna come to this place. And I live here, have was born and raised here all my life. And they mourned I get up when I had to come here, and I have gone through because of what's happened the past four months. And that's the only reason we feel the way we do today.
It's not fair.
It's not toward you, okay?
I'm pretty much.
We weren't in the loop, and then all of a sudden, here we go.
It's not the personal against you. As a matter of fact, we welcome someone to help us. We, we have no problem with someone making recommendations to help us. However, it's the way that the majority of all of this has been handled over a, a certain period of time that makes everybody wanna throw a red flag up and say, whoa, 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 put the brakes on, let's stop for just a minute, let's, let's reevaluate this process.
Well, I don't know the history of the last four months, but I do know that if the team can and should be viewed as an asset, I think it's gonna produce a good report that will be helpful to the commissioners and I would hope helpful to the EMS. Because at the end of the day, as a small rural community, you need a strong, healthy vibe of EMS to serve your people. And that would be our goal, to help you create that climate, that operation, so that you can have a sustainable operation going forward to serve your citizens.
Well, see, we've got a guy who's been doing this for twenty plus years as our director. And over the last eight years, seven years, whatever, he's been appointed to be over fire. He's been over EMS, he is EMA, he, he is over GMA. And without our supervisors, what he's put in place with the fire and the EMS and the EMA and all that does a wash. And it is, me as a citizen, forget that I work for the EMS service. Me as a citizen of this community, that means a lot to me. Just what he has put in place with that fire and, and EMA portion of what he does, because it's invaluable. And without those supervisors, he's not able to do that. And if you wanna hire somebody else to do those other three jobs that he does, now you're talking about another forty, fifty thousand dollars a year per, per person to try to cover those jobs.
Having served as the EMA Director in my county for a while, I have appreciation for what you're saying. I understand the difficulty, I understand the training requirements. So again, I feel very confident in the ability and experience of those who would come as a member of this team. The team hasn't been formed yet, it's been given formal approval by the State Office of EMS. And I feel pretty confident about who will be on that team, but I absolutely have confidence in the ability of the full group to consider every aspect that has been discussed here tonight.
Okay, I've got one more question, then I'm gonna shut up. I know that's hard to believe. And I'm just gonna be perfectly honest and to the point. Well, I seen it for y'all, coming down here to evaluate those. I think the people here need to know what's in front of them.
The truth is, there is nothing in it for us collectively, except that we have the satisfaction of leaving here knowing that we've helped the people of Pierce County and that we give you recommendations that will help you have a better, sustainable EMS. I'm not saying you don't have that today, but until we call and do the work, we won't know that. But there's nothing in it monetarily for us. We're all being paid by our respective employers. There's nothing that they're gonna put on the table unless you feel that they're gonna buy two people meals for a couple of days. But that's not worth somebody driving down here from Cobb County or from Mitchell County anywhere else. So I think it's, it's a matter of professional pride. It's a matter of, in my case, that I've worked for county governments. And I wanna know that counties are doing the best job possible. And if that means that you can make some, take some steps, the commission can, to help you have better EMS, then I can walk away knowing that I've done a good, good service for the people here in Pierce County. So there's absolutely nothing in monetary for us.
What is it they're trying to say that our department here is not doing like we should? I tell you something, I think we've got a very good project. EMS, fire, and fire that are speaking, those calls come out in the middle of the night, it's up different than the police. These people hit the floor, we can hear them. My husband and my family works with them. They don't hesitate. They go wherever they're called and whenever they're called.
Ma'am, I can tell you with all candor that in the conversations that I've had with Paul and a couple of the commissioners, I have not had them tell me that anything is wrong with your EMS. That, that they are looking to try to create the most efficient operation possible. They've not come, I haven't heard about the supervisor issue until tonight in this room. Paul's never mentioned that today. So nobody has made any statement to me to say that anything is wrong. What I have heard is that it costs a lot of money. Now, I know from personal experience, EMS is expensive. But at the end of the day, I don't care if you spend a million dollars on EMS, you take in nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, you only spent a thousand net. What's important to look at is the net cost of EMS. Are you billing your patients in a timely manner? Are you collecting as much as possible from Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, private pay? All of that's gonna be considered. So every aspect that we would look at is gonna be with critical eyes, trying to determine what's in the best interest of the people of Pierce County and how you can operate this service most efficiently. All one thing, if I may, I'm a veteran of both sides of the South Coast. And I am firefighter, but I'm also very much involved in healthcare. And if you'll notice, when we bill out, we do not get the return. And this is a unique business. You talk about being business. We're a unique business because you do not make what you should make. You bill for a hundred dollars, you get thirty dollars. It's, so unfortunately, we cannot run healthcare as a normal business. Second off, I hope you never have a heart attack or never have problems. But when you're laying on the side of the road, that ambulance rolls up, and we've got the best bid that we can get, the cheapest equipment we can get, and they go to do that part, or they try to pull you out of the ambulance, we try to hang them with jaws, and it doesn't work because we've got the cheapest stuff instead of the best. I hope it's not beating you. Because I've been in a situation where stuff didn't work because they had the cheapest stuff. We do have expenses, but healthcare is expensive. If you want good expense, good return, good health, we can sell you that. I'm sorry to say that.
Yes, I could say something if you don't mind. I'm a thirty-year veteran of EMS. Of those thirty years I have been, except for five years, in a supervisory position or a director, been a director of three services. I understand what the gentleman's coming from about wanting to do what's best for the county with county commissioners in the room. But let me also say this. I think that the best education any county commissioner can have in wanting to know about their service is to ask those that have been there. You may mention about having the, the consultant team come down and, and also talk to you about what they can do to help improve the EMS. Why waste two motel rooms and any kind of money? Even doing that, a small amount of money, that might be. When you've got a person here that's been there for thirty years, that knows EMS inside and out. They know about the building. Most of these guys here I know on the EMS department, I'm affiliated with Pierce County events. I don't, I don't work here until EMS involved. But having known what I have known over thirty years, and I also have been involved in the directorship and still a supervisor today, I would hope that my county commissioners, they will know something about EMS. Come ask those to have the knowledge of them. Why go to any outside source to have the knowledge when you've got people that are knowledgeable? Now, if this gentleman can help the Pierce County as far as giving them ideas about billing service and, and things of that nature, I'm all for that. But I am a taxpaying citizen here, so if we're gonna save money, let's save money. Why spend two motel rooms when you've got people here that's knowledgeable as a bunch to begin with? I, I think there's a little controversy, maybe interdepartmental going on here a little bit. Now, that's none of my business, but being a taxpaying citizen, it does become my business when it involves my family. I, this EMS service is very proficient. I've had the opportunity to be a part of this EMS service many years ago. I do know these guys, I know their dedication. And if I want to look up to see somebody that is knowledgeable enough that can take care of my physical needs, especially if I'm having a, a heart attack or a bad cardiac, these are guys I wanna see. So I, I'm not against anything as far as being able to do things better. But my, my concern is, why should even by anybody, even by this commission office, my thugs, right, go outside of this service to begin with when you've got people that know what to do and to begin with? Why waste two motel rooms? If they can save you money for us billing, I'm all for it. But beyond that, you've got people that's knowledgeable. Ask them, they can tell you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Would you report these made in public when they're finding Pierce may reach their conclusions? I mean, I know the public won't give a report.
Yes, when we make that report to the county commission, then it becomes a public document. It's, it's open record.
The biggest thing is, y'all, EMS is a thing. We have always been a thing, okay? EMS with one, EMS with us all. What gets sick here, it's sick. Something happens to one of them, it happens to the other. It's different here. And the past four months has been terrible for my ones, okay? That's why we're kind of a little upset and a little angry. Let y'all know how we finally feel because we kept our mouth shut, okay? But this man here does a great job.
Amen.
We know that, regardless.
I don't think, I don't think there's anyone on this board that doesn't think that y'all do a good job, that you don't do, you know?
Well, what's the question answered? Is there somebody on the committee that has been in Ken's place? Is it yes or no question?
The answer is yes. There will be a county EMS director on the team.
That has been like Ken in all departments.
I can't, I can't answer that question definitively. I don't think that Ann Lamb, who has been on the team with me in the, over the last three years, I don't think that she is an EMA or fire chief. So the answer is no on that.
So how can you honestly, in all fairness, evaluate Ken and the department situation when they're not in that, have ever been in his position? That's, that's the one thing we want to know, is. And that's what all the, his employees want to know because they are a close-knit family. You're not talking about, you know, individual employees. The EMS is a family.
I understand.
And it's, it's the fire, and then you add them all together, you're looking at one huge family.
That works together.
And I understand that.
Well, how could they?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'd like to answer your question if I could. And I think that's, to, again, say that the team is going to be comprised of people who are very intelligent, very experienced. They're going to be able to interview Ken. I'm sorry, I don't know your last name. We're gonna be able to interview you and get a, a concept from you about what your scope of duties are. And to the extent that what you're doing with fire or EMA or anything else hinges upon your ability to direct EMS, then that's necessarily going to indicate from your perspective what's required with regard to your supervisors and how important they are. So I think that all of that will be taken into consideration. I don't, I personally don't think that you have to have necessarily been in a position doing all three to be able to understand the difficulty of doing all three. I think that if you're open-minded and you consider all the details, that we can give you a fair assessment. At the end of the day, what we produce, assuming that the board agrees to have us come in or invites us to come in, what we're gonna do is produce a report. I personally believe it's going to be valid. I, I would pride myself on the work that I do. And if I didn't think this was a, a good use of my time, trust me, there are a hundred and fifty-eight more counties that I could go to and work on something else. So I think it's important, from my perspective, that we do a good job. I don't have confidence in what the preliminary report offers up, and I'm gonna be critical with my team members to say, we didn't cover this or that. So I have absolute confidence that we're going to consider all relevant information and produce a report that's going to be a benefit to EMS and to the county as a whole.
Thank you.
Tom, one more.
Let's cut to the chase. When Paul came, he was like a bull in a china shop, and, and he, he did things that agitated us. You know, from the city's standpoint, you know. But let's remember one thing. This board blew five billion dollars in four years in the surplus. So I would hope that this board would do an evaluation of every single department in the county. Because I pay county taxes too. And I am a citizen of the county. And if they can do their job more efficiently, I'm for it, you know? I'm sure that we're gonna find places that we can save money. We're gonna find places that were fantastic, and we're gonna find places you have to spend more money. But at least, you know, at least we need an evaluation. And I would hope that they would do every single department this way. With, you know, they're, they're doing the transit, now they're doing the EMS. They got administration, and you've got all the rest of them. You've got public works. All of that needs looked at, as far as I'm concerned as a citizen, because the five billion dollars that evaporated.
I understand that.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna tell y'all about Dave Wells.
Uh, you want me to address that?
I've never, I've never caught this man. He's always worked for this county. I've never, I've never caught this man, he's always worked for this company. He'll be at the top at ACCG for long.
I didn't know my boss was retired yet.
He's a, he's a, he's a great man. Every time I ever ask him anything, I get an answer. Not a day or two later, about fifteen or twenty minutes, he'll call me back. But he's a great man and an asset to ACCG.
I didn't pay you about a hundred bucks later.
They're not trying to say that they're fixing to, uh, get rid of some of our, in our departments, by replacing, that they're gone or anything like that?
No. Okay, item number three, a discussion on consolidation of Pierce County's retirement plan with, from ACC, GEB Corporation, and Edward Jones, Paul Christian.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, and people in the audience, what this item is, is we have a retirement plan for the employees of Pierce County, and in the past, it's been split up into two sec, two different sections, one run by one company and one run by another. And the recommendation is, uh, that staff is recommending that we put those under one company, because the, to maximize the investment that the employees are putting in, money coming out of your paycheck, going into an investment program, and we wanted to make sure that that is handled by one company and the investments are maximized, so when you retire, uh, you'll, you'll be able to have the most you can get out of what money you put in there. The way it is now, it's like one group doesn't talk to the other group, and it's really a bad setup, and, uh, they both, uh, have commented, both companies, that that's not the best way to do it. So we are suggesting to the board of commissioners that out of the three companies, you've got, Edward Jones, and you've got, uh, Gebcor, and you've got, uh, uh, ACCG. You know, what we're doing is a contracted service, and we're asking that the commissioners can just choose one of these companies, and let's consolidate this program for the employees of Pierce County, uh, so that we can, uh, start maximizing their return on their investment. Commissioners, do they all have a question? Do you have? The question is, which company would you like to put this with? I think y'all familiar with all three of them.
I have a motion that we accept ACCG. All in favor, by sign of a nine? Nine. Okay. Do we have a motion on Gebcor? That's ACCG.
That's the same.
Edward Jones.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, give it to Edward Jones.
Have a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, by a sign of a nine?
Uh.
Two to two.
All right, what you'll have to do in this case is take it on to the, uh, board of commissioners, Mr. Uh, when, uh,
Carl's here.
Carl, if comes back, who's out of town at present time, and let Carl break the town.
Item number four, request from Ken Justice to apply for a grant for an ambulance.
Uh, basically, what we're asking for is permission to apply, the officer trauma designated in to allow EMS to apply for an ambulance. If we're awarded this, they would pay seventy-one thousand dollars to purchase, so the remaining balance would be on the county.
Was there a remaining balance on that? You know, what if?
Ballpark. Uh, ballpark, we're looking at a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's total.
Total cost, so about eighty thousand.
About seventies or seventy-five, probably.
You want to know that, for sure that we actually bid that. So we have to make application by the end of December, um, and it'll be free on tax file, notification, and then we'll, we'll get it processed, put it on our ambulance, and receive the bill.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we allow Ken to go ahead and apply for a grant for an ambulance.
Second. All in favor, by sign of a nine?
Uh.
Right, item number five, is appointment of three members to the hospital board. They are Dick Larson, Eddie Bennett, and Ken Gerisi. Do I hear a motion that we accept those three names?
One more, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All in favor, by sign of a nine?
Uh.
And the i's have. Okay, item number six, request to purchase a side arm mower for the road department.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that is to, to replace, uh, the side arm mower that is, uh, they have now, that's in need of repair, it's, uh, pretty much worn out, and, uh, they've taken bids on that, and, uh, they need to go ahead and purchase that piece of foot.
The previous one we got, we traded in or we keep it?
Uh, we're gonna keep that one.
We're gonna keep, because we need to.
Well, we're actually gonna, going to, uh, uh, request another tractor and another mower, um, Splosh thirteen, I believe it is. So they'll have two, two tractors, two mowers.
So you don't, you don't, uh?
Oh, the price is thirty-one thousand dollars. And there will be some, uh, there's another small fee, or not small fee, but there's a fee for to, uh, a company, a local company here to take that tractor up to South Carolina, where the place is that has that side arm mower, to have it installed, and at that time, they're gonna check the tractor and the mower out and make sure everything's fresh. Thirty-one thousand.
Thirty-one thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion?
I think you're talking about two different things. The bid proposal that, that, that's in your packet is to purchase a new mower, a complete mower.
Well, this one just says a side arm.
That's what we're talking about, that's what we've been talking about the last two weeks.
Okay, this is something different. This is the tractor and the mower.
Okay, 'cause I knew we were gonna bring the tractor and the mower up.
Y'all have, we've already moved forward and approved everything on the side arm, that's already been done. This is something completely different. This is a whole new tractor and side arm.
Okay, so that one would be eighty-eight, uh, eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the tractor and the mower.
We've already, we've already got approved to fix the, uh,
The one that we've got.
Why, we need two.
You need two mowers. You need two tractors, one on one side of the county, one on the other.
It takes him a year and three months to do that.
That one breaks down, you don't have anything to, you need to get rid of, too far behind, it didn't work. So we're trying to add another tractor, another side arm, so we have one on one side of the county, one on the other.
Right, you got, you got a bid from the Shawnter Tractor Company for ninety-one thousand dollars, you got a bid from Albany Tractor Company for eighty-eight thousand five hundred, and you got a bid from the Shawnter Company for ninety-one thousand six hundred and twenty-two What is the, what is the, uh, percent that we can, to keep it in the county?
Uh, it's a five, no, it's five percent. Y'all bid five percent? Yeah, five percent.
You couldn't, uh?
Well, the company that makes the one that we've got now, the only place where you can get or replace is in South Carolina.
Since that's under five percent, I'll make a motion, we go to second lowest bid, Mr. Chairman, since it's, they're relatively close, and the Shawnter is in the county.
Are they within five percent?
Oh, yeah, they're fifteen hundred off.
Okay. Yeah, you can do the math.
All in favor, by sign of a nine?
Uh.
And the i's have.
Now, that'll go on to the, the full board for a final decision on December the sixth.
Remember, December the sixth, the meeting starts at five o'clock. Anything else we need to bring up? Anybody got anything to say?
Mayor's got one. I just wanted to comment on my follow-up from last month. I will say that, uh, your administrator and I have met, uh, three different times. We're meeting once a week to, uh, to, uh, try to learn how to get along. We don't do things the same way, but we're making progress. I was disappointed that I didn't hear from any of the commissioners about, uh, trying to approve the relationship between the ca, city council and the commissioners, and, and so I'm gonna try to talk to them individually, and Bill, I'll call you next week, and we'll make arrangements to go out and eat or something, so, 'cause I, I think we've gotta learn how to cooperate, we've gotta learn how to work together, we just have to.
I want to add to that, uh, I really appreciate the mayor, uh, extending that olive branch a few meetings ago, and, and I've enjoyed meeting with him, we've met three times, and had very pleasant conversations and, and good communications. I really appreciate it, Mayor, and thank you very much, and I, I look forward to our next meeting next week.
He's bothering us, he's still bothering like he said?
Oh, he bothered, he lived up to it, but now, now we're going Dutch.
I've got something to say, please, sir. Uh, I work with the fire department, and some of our fire equipment is kinda in foul shape when you try to get to a fire. And we, you want us to be there on a reasonable time, we need to get some repairs done, a lot of it, instead of just putting it off. Most, every one of them has got something that they can come up with. There's trucks that have been wrecked, and they haven't been fished yet, lights on a lot of them don't work.
Which, which one? That, that one on the one out at the?
Walkerburg.
That's already been escaped.
Okay, but then we've got lights, lighting problems, and then we've got some that won't crank half the time.
Well, Mr. Justice, all he has to do is just bring those to me, and he and I will discuss those, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank y'all for coming. This meeting is adjourned.